I would like to call the meeting to order. Notice the meeting was properly posted Wednesday, June 28, 2017. Item number three, discussion of hostile action to elected chairman and a vice chairman to the jail trust committee.
I will volunteer myself for services as chairman. I don't have any other committees at this point. So I'd be happy to do it if you guys have the trust in me to lead us forward.
I'd like to add to that motion if I may and appoint Mr. Compton as vice chairman.
I'd consider that a friendly amendment if Mr. Compton considers it a friendly amendment.
It's not too friendly. That's fine with me.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion parried. Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I need that back.
You're ready with the gavel and everything on it. Look, I get appointed chairman and he immediately gets us on leave. Item number four, thank you gentlemen by the way, discussion, review hostile action, including receiving your documents, proposed trust language, including the Tulsa Criminal Justice Authority Trust and a draft copy of the proposed Oklahoma County Criminal Justice System Authority Trust. The purpose of providing these documents was just to get the ball rolling. My printer was having issues and so we're working on getting that corrected and I don't have my copies in front of me at this point. Thank you. So with that, I'll just open it up for any sort of comment, discussion. Thank you. Thoughts, ideas, concerns, anything, maybe even just kind of expectations of what we may want to see going forward for the purposes of this committee and the creation of a jail trust that we could then recommend to the ESCTC.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the trust and I have some questions on the District Three's draft copy. And I have made some comparisons to the Tulsa Trust and I don't know if that's looking apples for apples.
Well, I believe the Tulsa Trust was created before some statutory changes were made. So there's a lot of things in there that is not possible now.
And I was told, I don't get this correct, I was told that the trust that was linked is supposed to be their latest trust. I was told that there may have been some statutory changes, but I don't know for sure. But I think that my question doesn't really go into the, you know, the Tulsa Trust. I looked at beneficiary, Mr. Chairman. On the Tulsa Trust, they indicated all the outline town where they would house their prisoners and stuff. Would we have to include that in ours, like Midwest City and Dale City and all that as far as boarding the prisoners?
I don't believe so. Again, that would probably be a question that we'd have to vet with council. One of my thoughts moving forward is of course, we want as a county to work with our municipalities to utilize the services at the jail. The way that the Tulsa document was forwarded and it's been several weeks since I've looked at it, it gave the cities a lot of control, if I recall. It actually gave them significant authority in the way, and I think that that could cause some problems in the past with, you know, what the cities wanted to do with the county jail versus how, you know, the county or sheriff or therefore the county itself wanted to move forward. So that would be a question for council and again, I don't know if that's something that you're prepared to address right here off the bat or, you know, that's what I thought. So I think that that's a question to be submitted. And what I'll do is I'll make a list of all of these things and then as we start to work through the document and the actual format and what does and does not need to be included, we can make sure we have a good solid legal opinion on that.
Okay. Thank you. Well, to me, I think we've got a few things first. There's been no determination that either the board of county commissioners or this group feels that a trust is the best solution. Okay? So I think we're looking at kind of figuring out what a trust would look like before that happens, which I mean, we can do that. I just want to make that clear that we don't know for sure if that's where VOCC wants to go, nor have we had discussions on that. Assuming that that is a yes, then we're looking at trust language. My understanding is there's two ways to create a trust similar to this. One of them is created by the VOCC and the other is an elected, well, whatever go for, a vote of the people. So we're looking at the VOCC creation in this document.
Which is a Title 60.
Correct. The questions that I have about this particular trust indenture is, I do think we need to look at title issues on potential property that the county would be conveying to the trust. On this first page, the language at the very bottom in that paragraph, forever irreveribly, it's easy to say, and relinquish, I don't necessarily know that, I mean, those are, those are pretty strong words and there is language in here that could unwind the trust at one point.
Which paragraph are you referring?
First page, your very bottom paragraph, the undersigned trust or hereby forever irreveribly.
I just wanted to try and say that.
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you. Appreciate that. That, and then...
Before you move on, Mr. Compton, so the concern being that it's a, should the trust no longer exist for any reason, how would we?
Well, yeah, there's language later on that says that the property would then revert back to the beneficiary, but it's kind of competing language a little bit. And I may be, you know, splitting hairs, but...
That's why we're here, is trying to flesh all these issues out.
My biggest question, I think that has to be addressed by this committee if we are going to go in this direction, is on page, starts on page three though, under the purposes of authority. There's some language in paragraph one, one, two, hang on, might be on a different page. Paragraph one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines down that starts comprehensive plans relating to the beneficiary's law enforcement. Are we looking at a jail trust or something that's more encompassing? Because in here, we've got law enforcement mentioned in that line. The next line we've got, and juvenile corrections. And then we mention law enforcement again later in that section. And then also then in subsection A, it mentions law enforcement and juvenile in there. Is this something that we're looking at doing an all encompassing or something that's just looking at the jail itself?
I think we have to go back to probably the third line of that first paragraph where it talks about the efficient use of all economic resources and powers. And so it is a, as drafted, more of a comprehensive kind of criminal justice system. The part that you referenced more specifically talks about, kind of more focused on facilities, so at least the law enforcement, jails, prisons, correctional detention system. And I think that's, again, one of those things that we need to talk about with the advent of kind of the criminal justice advisory group that the city is working on with some of the stakeholders. How did that come into play? Again, yeah, I mean, all of these things are on the table. What's the scope? Are we just talking about something that just has the jail entity? Or are we talking about something that, you know, more kind of administers all of those resources? So, I mean, the way it's written out is very broad.
Right. And that may be the will of this group at the end of the day, it may be the will of the OCC, it may not be the will of either or whatever, but that's just a concern of mine is that we do flesh out how broad or how narrow this creature would look at the end of the day. And then when you get to paragraph E, it said to administer a system and administer funds for a system maintaining, operating, and conducting criminal justice intervention and prevention programs, which sounds like law enforcement beyond just the facilities aspect.
Sure. What page are you on again?
It's page four. It's paragraph E under that, section one.
And again, gentlemen, just going forward, my intention would be to almost conduct the initial meetings that we have as kind of like an interim study that we would do at the Capitol, not a fact finding, you know, let's get all of the information that we can from sheriff's office, current jail administrator, certainly like you said, the municipalities that are involved in, and again, in addition to finding out some of the answers to these legal questions that we have, so we can put that together. So that's, again, kind of how I would organize this going forward, is let's identify these issues like we are and let's get as much information as we can so that we can continue to work on the document and get it to, again, if this is how we want to move forward, the assumption is because this was placed on our agenda for us by the VOCC is that they wanted us to at least start considering some sort of criminal justice system authority trust. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, you're fine. And my questions today are mostly, I mean, they're all going to be related to this particular document because that's really the only agenda item that we have.
Absolutely.
I do agree that we need to get other folks in here and figure out what is best based upon the current factual situation. But the other, the other question that I had on here was this relates to the actual And it appears as if we're looking at having a situation to where every trustee beyond the potential elected trustees would be turned over at the exact same time. And so you've got three of the, three of the seven that, you know, at every third year is going to be kind of starting from scratch. I don't know if maybe a staggered term where, you know, maybe a District One appointee, their initial term is a year, District Two is two years, District Three is three years to kind of start it off and stagger that way we've got, we don't have a big rain drain every three years. That, and then I know we run into an issue with PBA that if a commissioner, because the way the trust indenture is drafted, if a commissioner is not available, their chief deputy cannot sit. That may be something that we want to look at in this language, that if any of the commissioners aren't available for a particular meeting, that their designated chief deputy may be able to sit in there instead.
Definitely think that's a very valid point about the staggering of the terms for the appointed trustees and addressing, I guess, any sort of alternance if it is an authority or trust.
And then I know according to Title 60, that trust, we, it cannot be elected officials other than the OCC elected officials and a sheriff. Does that need to be addressed in there as far as who can't? I know Title 60 already tells us that they can't. I don't know if we want to spell that out and then if we want to just make it kind of broad that it's, you know, just any appointee or if the appointee needs to be, have a law enforcement background or a legal background or a community leader or something like that. I don't know if we want to spell stuff like that out as far as criteria. Maybe we don't.
Well...
And do they need to be unincorporated residents?
Sure.
Or does that matter?
Like we do on planning commission and we require...
Which I don't think that would necessarily, I don't think that would be a requirement, but I think those are things that we've, certain boards have that we...
Well, certainly, I know at the state level, if you look at a lot of those boards and commissions and things like that, they'll say, you know, nine members and one has to be from a city of less than this, one has to be from a city of a more than, one has to be a representative of a trade organization, one has to be involved in, on it. And again, it seems like it's my short time there than we were adding to that every year because somebody thought they needed to be represented, that weren't. So because of that experience, I probably default more to the, let the elected official appoint that they want to appoint, you know, who they think will do a good job, likely somebody with some sort of criminal justice experience. But again, it could be somebody who is very involved in, in the city or criminal justice issues for whatever reason. Again, I think about some of the appointees that serve unconditional bonds and some of those other types of committees that are pastors, you know, that are involved in jail and prison ministries and stuff like that. So that's something to consider, but I did draft it so that the elected official pretty much has carte branche to pick who they want. I do like the idea of making them Oklahoma County.
Yeah, this was going to...
With Oklahoma County residents, since that's ultimately putting the bill. How are we going to fund the trust?
Good question. Mr. Satterwhite's funding it, so.
Some financial difficulties like that won't be able to.
I mean, I think that we would have to, I don't know what our options would be at this point other than general fund appropriations and less, and then down the road, I mean, there's an option again, if we're going to talk about some sort of ongoing revenue source specifically dedicated to jail or criminal justice operations. I mean, there's been talk for years about temporary revenue sources for construction and then ongoing ones. And obviously that's a big issue.
Right. And that, I mean, we talked about if we limit the trust to jail operations or to jail operations, law enforcement, the juvenile system, but, you know, as far as the funding, that was on top of my list because a lot of assumptions have been made on my part, that, you know, I was assuming that this trust was established where it was established on the fiscal year, that, I don't know at that point in time, that some of the funds that currently go to the sheriff would then go to the trust to administer. I'm just not really clear how we would actually put that mechanism in place. We have the trust, I think that's only source of revenue, it's what we have currently today.
We do provide the trust, at least in this draft document, with all of the authority to pick and collect fees and charges and things like that for, you know, the keeping of detainees, also to, you know, receive monies from really any source as far as grants and things like that, but I know that, I mean, currently we utilize a lot of grant opportunities. So we do give them the authority to do that, to refinance, to close, sue and be sued. I mean, all of those things that you'd expect the trustee would have the power to do. I was just looking to see if I address funding at all, it doesn't look like that's in there.
Well, when you say sue and be sued, that was another reason that I was looking at a resident of Oklahoma County. Some of the language in, towards the end of the document on the page, I think it's 13, it has, yeah, paragraph number 31, "They may compromise and settle any suit or action and discharge the same amount of assets of the trust to state together with court costs and attorney fees." So if you've got folks making those kinds of decisions, which, and I don't even know, I mean, some of those lawsuits wind up making their way to the tax rolls, so I don't know that we want to give all of that authority to compromise and settle those suits when BOCC may wind up needing to be involved in its official capacity, but...
Well, all of the commissioners are involved.
But not as the board of county commissioners.
Correct.
Correct. So if the trust was sued, even though they're not county commissioners on the trust, would the board of county commissioners also be sued?
I think it would operate the same way the PBA. The PBA would be named individually, but that doesn't necessarily mean the BSCC's part in a party because they're two separate entities. Legal, is that correct?
Well, we can't control who gets named in a lawsuit. And typically, and particularly in your civil rights lawsuit, the BSCC and the sheriff is named. Oftentimes, we can get one of the two out, sometimes we can't. So regardless of how, while the trust authority might be, in most cases, the proper party does not preclude naming the BSCC, would not necessarily preclude also naming the sheriff. Who knows?
Oh, I mean, and they can name them in their individual capacity.
Absolutely.
Which happens too. Another one for the list of legal research and whatnot. The funding of it, I think it's much a legal question as well as kind of logistics you need to sit down with. If only we knew the chair of the BET. I think that that would be a good discussion.
I know.
Now, that's a, yeah, we'd have to identify that again. I think that the assumption the document is written is that that is an amount that is determined. I don't even know. Would that be determined by budget board or would that be determined by the BSCC?
The amount that they would get?
Yeah, that would be appropriated yearly.
That's a chicken or egg. Because budget, well, as far as the general fund, you're talking about the, some of the special revenue for the boarding of prisoners and that kind of stuff would go directly...
Through the trust.
To the trust, in the proposed language. But general fund appropriations, I guess the OCC would request a certain amount to go to the trust, but most of them are...
Do we currently, do we appropriate any money from general fund to PBA?
No.
Now, sometimes we ask PBA to share the wealth with, by the county general fund.
Correct. Well, we may be used to different words than sometimes, but it has been asked.
It has been, it's been asked and, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Logistics. What up?
If we seek another legal opinion on this, who would we go to? I don't believe that Aaron will have the credit. I don't believe that Oklahoma County VA can assist us in this.
Well, I think we've got an attorney that is the chairman of this board, right?
Who is not bond counsel, right? And I think that's, am I understanding you correctly that you think we need to consider someone with expertise and...
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, we brought issues, I think it could be corrected here, but once this committee agrees upon a recommendation, I would think that that would have to be vetted out before we recommend it to the board of county commission.
By outside counsel?
Yes. I mean, funding is going to be, there's a lot of major issues, but funding is one of the most major issues. And that's where we're talking to start.
I would agree that it would be a good idea to have bond counsel of some sort review the document when it's close to its final.
Right. I mean, we're very fortunate, we have two lawyers on the board, so we can do a lot of it here.
I'm glad you pointed that out, yeah.
As far as, you know, clearing up the language, but, you know, I think we need a third party, if you will, to go ahead and make sure that all the ducks are in a row.
I certainly don't object to having attorneys check and double check any of these documents or any document.
I feel like I'm enormous, you know? I mean, we've got so many attorneys in here. What I'm telling you, they're everywhere.
To do that, I do, again, the kind of skeleton or backbone for the proposed trust indenture that we're talking about today did come from Jerry Bush, kind of back in the day when we were first talking about what that might look like, what are some of the lessons that maybe we can learn from Tulsa County, best practices that we can take from there and other jurisdictions, which I've looked at a little bit, kind of some out of state, but again, their statutes are so different than ours do. I mean, yeah, those are unfortunately not very helpful.
And I had looked at some current trusts here in Oklahoma, and I'm not going to name any counties, but there's one county that was having issues and their biggest issue was the trust document did not clearly define what the trust role was and what law enforcement, jail, and everybody else's role was. And so an auditor came in and basically it was just lack of communication. So obviously we want something that's just black and white and very defined as to, you know, whose possibilities are what.
Well, and that's where I think one of, if not our initial question that needs to be answered is how broad and or how narrow does this need to be because the...
It'd be in recess.
Actually, we can continue this. We have a quorum.
Yeah. Now, that's, and that's something that I want to go on the record as saying, the intent of District Three is by no means to establish any sort of group, entity, organization that's going to... The intent, District 3 is by no means to establish any sort of group, entity, organization that's going to micromanage law enforcement. I mean, the thing is, the sheriff is an elected county official that's elected to do law enforcement for the county. That's different than jail administration, which I think is more of the, at least the discussions that have occurred. You know, let the sheriff focus on that part of law enforcement and the patrolling and the things and alleviate some of the pressure of having to administer the jail and all of the things that are constantly happening right now with maintenance and all that kind of stuff, so.
Well, and if we get that, that answer, how broad or how narrow, then that affects what the funding level and how much funding you're going to need. And it also is going to help in delineation of powers and responsibilities that need to be in this document to clarify any gray areas that may or may not arise. Because the last thing we want to do is, you know, take a situation and by trying to help the situation, make it worse by creating other unintended consequences.
That never happens in government.
I know. And I don't want us to be the first to do that, so.
I can't imagine that additional bureaucracy would ever be created that would make things less efficient or unintended consequence. Although, at the same time, there. The prospect of having more coordination between the courts and the DA's office and the public defender and the jail and just. Because again, it's a complicated process. There's a lot of broken pieces, you know, to the extent that there could be some sort of county entity that could help coordinate all that and keep. You know, there are, there is the potential that we could actually help with some efficiencies and things like that. But you're right, we have to be on guard about just creating more problems.
Well, then, speaking to that, I agree with what you just said. Would it not be a good idea for us in a very, not too in the future meeting, to include, you know, the DA's office, the public defender's office, somebody from the courts, the sheriff's office, of course, juvenile stakeholders, if you will, to come in and give us some of their ideas and what they would like to see?
Precisely. Yeah, and that's kind of, again, the interim study concept that let's proceed with fact finding and hearing from all these folks what their questions, concerns, ideas are. So we can take that into consideration and hopefully have everybody on the same page.
And also somebody from the VA group, like.
Right.
And Mr. Williams, I know, he's came and told us some of their ideas and everything, so.
And the trust language could be presented. Well, I'm, and excuse me for being out. I know I missed some of this stuff, but.
We stopped talking since you left.
Could this be a graduated type trust? In other words, I understand that it could be all encompassing, which, what I know today, or my feelings on that, is I would rather take a piece of pie one at times as you're taking the whole pie. In other words, my thoughts today, which could change, is jail operations would probably be the main thrust of the trust. I don't know if the trust language supports, if the trust decided a year later, if they want to take in an aspect of law enforcement, an aspect of juvie, whatever, that that would be providing the trust they could do. But I would rather consider testing the waters. I mean, it's my understanding originally, this would be a jail trust, kind of like what you mentioned earlier, Cody. Not saying that it maybe should branch out later and take in other areas, I don't know. Obviously, the VA study has changed a lot of dynamics at this point. And I don't know if the trust could help that. If they can, that would be great. But if we want to establish a trust, we might want to look at, maybe if we have to change the language, it would allow us to come back later and bring in more activities in the law enforcement community or whatever activities we think that the trust should ultimately do, that from the beginning, just concentrate on the jail aspect of the trust.
And I would assume that the process for doing that would just be amendment by the B O C C of the trust document.
I mean.
Well, does this call for a two thirds vote of the members of the trust to amend the trust document?
Because I'm trying to think, obviously, we don't want the trust to emission creep without.
Right.
The authority of those who are currently vested with that. So that's another thing I'm making notes to research. How does that happen? Because again, the analogy that's coming to mind is kind of like annexation and de-annexation and kind of, you know, the county can't go into Edmund and say, we're going to annex this into unincorporated Oklahoma County land. But, you know, Edmund can creep one way. Again, it's just kind of that process of how do we work that out?
Right.
It's a chicken and egg.
I mean, a political reality is that we have four elected officials up for reelection. So there's a good chance we're going to have some new people down here. And my thoughts, if we have an all encompassing trust, we're going to have some, could have some people up here that's never been involved. I mean, we happen, if our elected officials are still going to be here for another four years, you know, we've never done this before. And I'm just kind of, again, looking at doing it right the first time with the jail or whatever else, but not bring in the, all the aspects about what we ultimately maybe would like to have in the trust.
That's where I think our first step is to get the stakeholders in here and figure out what their ideas are. Because there may be something, there may be an animal out there that is not a trust that is a better solution.
I agree.
You know, I just, I think that. And then after, after we're able to hear from all of those stakeholders, you may still have the same opinion or you may think that the trust should be, you know, even narrower than what you think now or broader than what you think now.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, you're exactly right. We got, I mean, we have to talk to everybody that Paulson could be involved because, you know, they could share a lot of information we may not have any idea about at this point.
What other issues, concerns, thoughts, questions regarding our working document at this point?
I don't recall if there was strong indemnification language in there or not. Was that covered? It's just one thing that I wanted to make sure that we looked at.
I'm not seeing this. I like the way that you have your attorney hat on right now.
Can you have it really taken off? I mean, you know, vacation, you're out at the pool and you see some women in small jackets and lawsuits and, you know, it's hard to enjoy life.
And everything's potential liability.
Yes. But I guess if you're looking at it from the other side, potential opportunity.
The wrong side, yeah.
You're on the wrong side.
Okay. It's a good point.
I would say, I know Commissioner Vaughn had mentioned something about August the 11th. And while we may be able to get a recommendation back by then, I do think that, and I know he would rather us be as deliberate as possible and not just try to hit an arbitrary date. But I do think that we need to, this is something that's going to take.
Yeah.
A lot of time, a lot of attention, because we definitely, whatever is done here, we've got to get it done right.
Well, and on that note, I don't, I mean, I know Commissioner Vaughn doesn't consider it arbitrary. I mean, it's one of those things where his concern is to keep the momentum going to dig in, work hard, get a good solid recommendation as we approach, you know, upcoming elections and things like that. And trying to get a good framework or foundation in place before.
Right.
Changes may occur, may not occur, but. And again, unfortunately, at times, work on the past jail trust or past force committees or ideas about how to renovate, rebuild, replace the jail. I mean, they just, they seem to drag on and get stalled out. And so I think that was also part of the premises.
Yeah.
Keep it, keep some healthy pressure on. Well, trust me, I feel it, especially as the list grows longer. One of the, this is just a quick aside. One of the things that we haven't determined, Matthew, is kind of meeting regularity. Is that something that we typically do in these organizational meetings? We have in the past with, like, Paulson Government and things like that.
You can, but there'll be special meetings, all of them will be special meetings until December 15th.
That's even better.
Then we can set the schedule for the next, next year.
By special meeting, you just may call it a chair, right?
Basically.
Right.
I mean, you can't set a schedule for the meetings until December 15th. So basically, open meeting wise, they're all going to be special meetings.
Fifteen.
The power lies in the minister.
It's a good list of things to look at and consider. Again, I will start moving ahead with getting these questions answered and getting some people lined up that we need to hear from as we move forward in the process.
What else?
Item number four. If, I would entertain, I think, at this point, a motion to receive. I don't know that there's necessarily any action that we need to take, but to receive the documents that have been presented.
Motion received. Second.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Any new business to come before the committee? Seeing none. Citizens' participation. Any citizens that would like to be heard? Seeing none or comments. Item number seven. Mr. Satois?
No, thank you.
Mr. Compton?
Have a happy Fourth of July.
Happy.
See you before then.
And say Fourth of July to everyone. Anyone want to move to adjourn?
Someone.
Thank you.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries.